Okay, I'd like to call possession our work session. Uh, we are starting six oh two. We'll do the pleasure of making sure to have our board.
You should come on up.
You're on the board. Okay. This is Derek, this Anderson, Miss Beebe.
Here.
Mr. Buckon, here. Miss Davidson.
Here.
Miss Perry. Ms. Trippendrazo. Miss Penzarella. Miss Pauline, we have a call.
We do have one thing, Ms. Tarashi will be here around six thirty. Just to give you some information on the jump rope for Heart. Fundraising, these kids did a thing in Downey School. We just want to recognize her in public, the worksheet for that as well. And she basically, you know, she reduced agenda items. Any other questions to have? School board's ready to add. We'll have enough change to do that.
All right, let's take a break. Any questions, comments, concerns under the finance, financial report? Or let's first start with any of the super temp's report, work for administrator, any of those reports, the principals, et cetera. Any questions or any of your reports that we had? I did have one with Mark in reference to he's, when he went to the Red Hill meeting. It seemed to be the focus of discussion on the park testing. And you, when you went to the board members, asked them what kind of came out of that meeting, kinds of questions.
It didn't seem like any of the districts, I guess, they were trying to kind of rank the table. We have one meeting a month, a couple Fridays back. There's any concern about the technology aspect? I don't know, we had some, everybody had their little perks and things that happened. Keep getting, you know, that as well. There's more just the timings they took. Not so much the smaller districts like us, but we have some, you know, some more of a high schools, people in Black Forest Plankton. You know, you could have two kids in an AP calculus class, you know, different grade levels, different tracks. One of those, one of those kids is pulling out to take their park test, while seven of the kids had a twenty-four, taking out to take the test, and then there's other seventeen kids left behind because they're not taking that test yet. So it was more of this unbalanced, the schedule, what it looked like. So teachers were frustrated with the fact we weren't seeing full classes. I know you have a high school student from that. So for her.
She said, fine, I mean, significant degree today. She was the last day they were taken to the library. Obviously, there's a control. So she didn't really, she wasn't prioritized. I had to, so.
And then the number of opt-outs, some of the larger districts had a lot. I think we did, I think we were at twenty-one students. Twenty-one families, some family didn't wait on one child, refused. So as far as that number, we talked about that ninety-five percent numbers for funding. We were actually funding that still. It was like four point six percent or something like that, so. But that, that still hasn't come out either, as far as how they're going to fund schools.
Especially since you have a district by Cherry Hill that has almost twenty-three hundred children bopped out.
They had twenty-seven percent of the kids actually tested.
Only ten, twenty-seven percent tested.
So, you guys, we'll give some feedback.
They don't get funded, do they?
Everybody gets funded.
They don't get anywhere now what we get.
No. They would. And that hasn't been determined, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Okay. Sure. The other comment, because I met with Mark yesterday, this is going through the Jefferson Samson here, is the adjustment to the current school calendar because of stove closers.
The one calendar also you have there is the race press in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. It's the one that doesn't say draft on it. So we will have in June, instead of getting out of group, we're scheduled out the eleventh, tenth or the eleventh, we'll now have two, a half day on Friday the twelfth, a half day on Friday the fifteenth.
Monday.
Excuse me, Monday the fifteenth. And then teachers have one day PD on the sixteenth. If we're doing this, we're at three snow days for the year. Any questions or kind of extensions? And for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen calendar, it's just a draft. The local regions, development calendar, what goes into it. One of our main things is aligning it with the regional, with some other people in the area, of what, what that looks like. Not only for things that are reliable for our lunches, our breakfasts, or to eat in our lunches, but also things like, if we have families with mul-, you know, you have two kids in fourth and fifth grade, and you have another kid in ninth grade and tenth grade, juggling schedules and things like that with families. So for September, the first is a Tuesday next year, so we will bring teachers in for two full days of PD on Tuesday and Wednesday, and then bring students in for two half days on the third and fourth, on Thursday and Friday. And then we'll start the full days coming up on the eighth, which is a teacher's day. Which we get our, we're beginning running with lunches, which is, and also lastly, just some PD days on the afternoon sessions as well.
Can I have, I have a request.
Sure.
Is it possible to put on this calendar, like, progress report for mid-March period dates?
Sure.
Not report card dates, mid-March period.
That's a good suggestion.
Um, I think it would really be helpful, and it was actually on my list, as far as putting as many places as humanly possible.
Sure.
So, if we could do that. And I did have a question, I didn't get to ask you, but is it possible, I know last year we had done it, but is it possible to get a list of the teachers that are up for tenure this year, for us to have?
All of that will be in the next order agenda.
It is, okay.
Yes, and it's separated by the number of years. So usually we'd one, two, three, four up for tenure, and then those who are tenure. So the next agenda is in terms of the amount of stuff.
So some of the things in the fifteen, sixteen's calendar as well, I know we were having a concern with the number of half-days we used to have in the schedule. Over the last two years, we've knocked, knocked some of this down a little bit. We can't have, you know, we have to have some for conferences and things like that, for some other reasons, but we have eliminated, I want to say probably four or five half-days over the last two years. The conferences seem to work out well this year. There was some feedback from REA regarding not having enough time in the fall to speak to all parents, or the conference time. We used to have four days of conference, we had to cut that down to three. There's a couple of different ways we propose it. I mean, keep it the way it was, there's always a way to get it extended. We have one day for conferences where students would have off, and then we'd bring teachers in from late morning till evening hours, which we all would make the parents' flexibility on doing that. In addition to the two other half-day conference dates. It's tough, it's tough for a teacher to see if they have twenty-four, our numbers are pretty good, twenty-four, twenty-five students, if you only have fifteen minutes slotted in for each one, the number of hours you have is difficult.
I'd like the idea of having the evening, because I would imagine most families, both husband and wife were working, and it's tough to do the day conference. Some of them are losing pay, so having the evening conferences, I think, are.
That was a benefit. But having that day, that was also discussed, we just threw that idea out there, if you had a day off in the fall, the students, the teachers, they're going to work like eleven to eight.
Does the conferences have to be done within a certain time period?
What do you mean, like hour-wise, or?
I mean, like, do they have to be done in a day, or three days, or can you do them over in the course of a month, please?
In the past, we've tried to do it based off, after report cards were distributed. There used to be four days, but allowing a little bit more time, there was a concern with the nine half-days we had in the schedule. We used to do it November, when you're basically learning here in November, with teachers' convention, Thanksgiving holiday, things like that, switched down to three days, so. There really is, there really is a set, traditionally, that's what most districts would do.
Those three days.
Well, you can expand it, it seems to work better, another, in another four and a half. I guess, how's your?
Yeah, most parents, like you said, during a day, it's easier for me and my wife, we both look like, most parents, we used to have workdays, a lot of parents come in after school. I'm not saying torture the teachers, make them stay for a month, but, yeah, try to be part of a questionnaire. You send them with the parents.
Teachers are, teachers are contracted, you know, in this building from seven forty to two forty. So that would have to be a contractual thing. They're all required to come back two nights, two nights a year for conferences.
What about the ones at the middle schools, pretty younger, the raises?
It's the same, it's the same thing. It's like eight, eight fifteen to two fifteen. And then there's the two nights we built in, that was, this is the first year we've had night conferences. The only other districts not to have that available to parents, so we did one night conference in the fall, one night conference in the spring.
So were they running out of time because too many parents requested night conferences?
No, I mean, our day numbers are still strong.
They were still strong.
Yeah, we still see the parents for that. That doesn't seem to be the issue, it's just sometimes they run a little over, you know, sometimes they try to accommodate. But we've always told people too, you know, I'll may, I'll go cover your class if you need to have somebody come in at, you know, twelve-thirty, or eight-thirty, or whatever it is, in order to fit that person, it might be the following week. So sometimes a parent might not see that the teachers are up three to three, they might send them up to the following week before they're done. And then we just try to accommodate their schedule. But the concern was, if I have basically, you know, eighteen slots and twenty-four kids, how am I squeezing that in?
I think we need to figure something out with that, because honestly, it's super important for all of us, like, because people, everyone, to have parent involvement, so you don't want to limit the amount of time, you know, that they have.
Where does any slot come from? Three days?
Just with the, yeah, with the amount of time they have, roughly, it's two hours, you know. Yeah.
So you go, like I said, you have four days, you have enough slots for everyone?
Or you could look at, if you wanted to do, one other concern was, you know, you want to see all the parents in the fall. But sometimes parents in the spring don't want that conference. I, as a parent, and Mrs. Perry's a parent, she'd want conferences every, I want them every other month, it seems like, I don't know how she feels, but I'm not, but that's how I am, personally, as a family, that's what, I, I'm concerned about progress. Do, can we do two fall conference nights, so we have that extended time, and then maybe do two days in the spring, so you're not going to have as many, and just do it as a teacher sees needed for that student.
As needed, as needed.
As needed, thanks.
Well, the question comes in, I saw it on the, yes, Eze's report, it said that she had ninety percent participation in the elementary. So if that's the case, and we were at ninety then, that's, you can't do it in two days in March.
And the other thing that came up was that some parents asked, oh, we don't really, everyone was scheduled for a conference. And the thing was, in the past, teachers were, would request conferences if needed. I know that the discussion was, everyone should have the option of receiving a conference. So if a parent doesn't want a conference, that should still be an option, but it's just, it should be open up to everyone as a whole. And I think that might have been the difference between scheduling everyone versus opening conferences up to everyone. Or, you know, I know, I think when I was teaching, we used to have a thing that would say, please give me a call at this number, because I just want to have a phone conference with you and talk to you about what's going on. So I mean, those are all things that can be discussed.
So are all teachers still, because I, I know for Aaron, he did have the option for a telephone conference, if necessary, are all teachers doing that, or?
They can, yes.
You did have some, then you should.
You know what, what is the, what is the general, what is the concern? The concern is that.
The amount of time.
They thought they didn't have enough time to see all their, all their parents.
Teachers, I thought they didn't have enough.
So if a teacher's twenty-five students, or?
They're going to cut the amount of minutes down, because it's difficult, especially in that fall, if you cut it down to ten minutes or something, that's, that's, that's the time you sit down and exchange pleasantries.
And anyways, admitted to that, so parents, fifteen minutes isn't enough, you know, because of the questions they have, or they're trying to work with the teacher, or teachers to try out a certain way. Sometimes a conference will be twenty-four minutes.
I thought, I mean, as a teacher, you don't have to be rude and push things.
Oh, you gotta go, you have your time, so.
So what are your options? I mean, so the option, right now, they do it in two days in the fall, right, you're saying?
Well, there's, there's different options. Like I said, we could do, where we gave students a day off, and open it up from eleven to seven one day, and then do the other, keep the other two days as well.
What's, what would be the drawback of that?
It wouldn't be, it would just be considered a professional development day for the teachers. They, they, contraction gives a hundred and eighty-five days, where students, contraction gives a hundred and eighty, or students required.
You have a little century that will have access.
Yes. There's no drawback, I mean, and the unions seem like they'd be up for something like that as well.
Why wouldn't you do that?
The problem with that, though, is you're limiting the parents to.
No, they still have the other two days as well. Let's say Wednesday, we're off, okay? Eleven to seven. Thursday and Friday are still half-days. They have an opportunity.
That's something we could do.
That's an option. And again, this is a draft, I just want to throw it out there. Then if you have the two, what would you find?
Two, two days.
Then, huh?
So we're giving a draw.
But then you'd have, and you're running it on Friday.
Only people to the normal time on Friday and extended on Monday.
What do you mean?
Can't go contract to your son's one night.
Sure, again, you did one and a half days, if you did a Wednesday night, that's all. As a normal hand day with an evening, you could still do it, and just make Monday, Friday as.
You're sending a Friday, a full-day conference for me and up to.
A normal day. Yeah, just a normal school day, and we're all, don't extend it.
So, because you said you only people on Friday, that sounds like, just do it Wednesday.
Again, this is why we're having discussions, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, and it's seven o'clock late enough, for, some people don't get up before five, and maybe have to get home and have, get there for their children, can they get in?
You want to say seven, because you want, again, the conference might start at seven.
Seven.
Maybe you'd like to extend.
I just don't, maybe, should we take it to eight?
And another thing, the REA was having conferences, maybe scheduled around progress reports, rather than the report cards, I don't know.
I think that's a great idea. I will plan, say, let's do that on front end, back end.
That way it gives parents time to know what they're going to be seeing on a report card, versus talking to a teacher after a report card's already been issued.
Yes.
There's time for them to improve their grade.
Yes, great idea, thank you.
Are you saying that the parent-teacher meeting would be twice a year, during the progress reports, before you do the report card, along mid-Wednesday, and then two half-days Thursday? For drawbacks, no reason not to do that, right?
Honestly, because what actually, if you look at the calendar, Mark, what is the actual mid-March period for then? Because that would then change, and probably fall right in the commission.
It's usually about, it's usually about, I think, by the third week, maybe.
Right.
Or, we lose, yeah, we would lose a PD day, or we could have that one day, the eleven, seven, right? And again, I'm just throwing stuff out, I'm just not, I'm just trying to create some confidence in people's needs and understanding.
I think, since I'm the one that's like, well, why, why don't we know about this problem back then, I would certainly much rather have a conference at midterm, hence the reason I asked for it, when our midterm's not, like, being put in as many cases as possible, that would then count for two, and that only means one, that isn't counted, because technically, they would see, we would see it in the first and the second, so it would just leave the third mid-March period as apparent, then you're, you're on your own to actually.
Or if you wanted to do it the first and?
First and last.
First and last.
Great idea.
Because you want to see progression as well.
I think that might be better, of things that could be worked on over the summer, which then comes back to the topics that we had discussed before, about making sure that we were still, you know, making parents aware of the things that, that things are struggling with, and like, you know, when we're, I know that I've been with your child for the last five months, and this is the issues that we still aren't seeing. I think that might even be better, Sean.
And it doesn't really have to be a face-to-face, you could even do a mid-March period telephone conference for ten minutes, just a quick check-in, here's what's going on, and then have a face-to-face, or vice versa, whichever, as long as there's a check-in point at some point.
Because when would it be term due, though, for that last March period?
That's, I'm just thinking, it might run a little bit depending on when Mark's, Mark's going to be.
Six-year.
That's why, again, this is a draft, we're just throwing ideas out there, except I just want to hear your feedback.
I like that.
That's all, all options on the table, I think, to REA, you know, speaking with them.
We just had a lot of period ends. So what would it be, probably like April, probably, right?
What, last week?
Probably, yeah, probably the last week. Again, it's, the schedule's a little different this year, days and snow, stuff like that.
Because what actually, because I see here that you put Easter weekend vacation back in, the full week? Is there any?
We're trying to line ourselves with Black Forest Plankton. Also, if we're getting done, if you look at some of the things, if we were to get done next year on?
No snow days.
With no snow days, if we were to get done on January, June eighth, for the following year, September two thousand sixteen, that'd be close to, that'd be thirteen weeks, this seems to not be a school. So we're looking at, getting done too early is not, and I know some, some people that might have different respect, getting done too early is not a good thing. And our parents have issues with childcare, and we all have kids, and we know what that that issue is, and I'm very aware of that. But really, there's no, all the schools, there's no activities for kids to do, you know, the mid, second week in June. There's no camps that have started, there's no rec programs that have started, they're all starting a little bit, usually that third, fourth week in June is when they're starting. So we're, you know, the common of that, trying to not have these kids off for close to three months.
If you did switch it to the last of April, and the schedule stayed for that week of Easter off, the nice thing about that is it will give, if you did go to the Friday off with the two half-days, if it falls in that week, it does give you, instead of having it so close together with Easter and March, it'll give them a little bit more of a break in April, just for an extra day, for a weekend.
If I could make a suggestion on the conferences, because our discussion's been very, very helpful, if, if you have any other ideas, send them an email through our board connection on the computer, and we'll just have a discussion, that's fine.
I got something to give up.
Any ideas that you may get after tonight, just send them off to Sean in the, to Mark.
Do you have flex day in all, meaning, so you go through January, February, March, there's no snow days, like you said, what's the target date you want to school your name, like the seventeenth?
Yeah, sometime on that Thursday, that Thursday.
Would you be able to extend Easter break? I don't know if that's even up, so Easter break is when?
Twenty-fifth, in the black, locked out, spring, through the first of April.
I don't know if people want it to dissolve more in the week, but, you know, if you're getting into that timeframe, and you haven't had any snow days to that point, like, on the fifteenth, have a date saying that we're extending Easter break, and a lot of people want to go away, plan vacations, do different things with your kids, so on the fifteenth, that would be the date you have to let everybody know by, for like, two weeks, you know, no snow days, so we're extending Easter break from twenty-fifth to, from twenty-fifth to thirty-first, and then twenty-fifth to the sixth, three days, whatever you need. I don't know if the bad idea would teach you, I don't know, messes up your school, I don't know if you'd an option, but.
Too drastic, you change.
Because I think we're going for.
I mean, if anything, if you really get stuck, I'm going to be over not have snow days.
Well, because we end so early, though. We're ending by the fifteenth.
Assuming there's no days.
So what we do, let's say, when we have on the calendar, I believe it says, it'll say that snow days, we made up as follows, we will add three days onto the end of the school year, if there's more than three days, we'll take these away from the Easter break. Yeah, we took that Thursday, I believe, we also made up a day in February, we had half-days, so we had, like, we had seven days before, you know, February last year, so we were, we were kind of scrambling. Yeah, we're still trying to line ourselves up with the regional as well. We're going off to it out there.
So instead of these, break, something like that, you could either do, or Friday, or Monday.
The Friday before the morning.
So we have like, so it's like a four-day weekend for a holiday. It's with the Thursday and the Friday, so it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, or anyway, if there was a kid young for that.
Okay, not no partial, like, be that true?
That's what I am, that I'm saying. Because you've got actually park in March next year. So if you leave those three days, and you take off that last week, where does park fall?
They give you, we're five days to administer, is that?
More than a month?
It takes us two weeks, so maybe even a total of twelve school days. Yeah, every school should.
We could still fit it in, even with the half-days, we could still fit it in.
Yeah, we should.
After this passing of the stretch, I feel fine on a half-day, if we have to have a test day, I'll let that, we're kind of fine.
All right, are there any questions with any of the other reports that you've had an opportunity to read through?
I have one question. Mr. Peely?
Yes.
I'm sorry. The middle school study hall lunch hours, to help students in danger, complete the necessary work to be promoted, do we have a lot of kids needing that?
Which I did a lot. You know, last, last year we started a little bit later into third trimester, this year we started in the second, and, you know, it, I mean, if I had to gauge how many kids were in that total, in the two middle school lunch periods, maximum, at the most, probably fifteen. And again, now, now we're in the third trimester, so it's time to.
So it's fifteen out of two hundred, right? Just call them numbers.
More than three hundred.
Oh, it's three in that, right, because there's a hundred for three.
Yeah.
It's actually a work ethic. The numbers keep going up.
I'm just trying to stay in the, the hard days.
All right, we're gonna just stop from going over the agenda right now, we have a special little presentation at six thirty, about our jump rope for the heart.
Presentation's Mr. Ashi discussing.
Mr. Ashi is the presentation. In your favorite jump rope?
They did not tell me that part.
Some of the board, some of the board members wanted to recognize.
I did too. She wanted to bring, well, actually, it was because.
Jump rope for everyone?
There's some more wanting everyone's jump rope, and have Peely and Yessi have a competition.
I'm going to pay it in.
She said, I'd beat him, so don't worry about it. So, my little cheat sheet here, just from what I know at Downey, Downey has done Jumper for Heart two years before I came here, so in two thousand twelve. And they alone raised like fourteen hundred dollars with Jumper for Heart. In two thousand thirteen, yeah, it was not, it was two thousand two hundred and twenty. BAME has not done Jumper for Heart for about like eight or nine years, so me coming back, I had always just, remember doing it and having so much fun in my elementary school with my phys ed teachers, so I definitely wanted to implement that here in this community. So last year, totally combined flip schools, we raised four thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars last year. This year, our goal was, you know, to raise a little bit more than we did last year, but, I mean, we completely blow it out. It was ten thousand seventy-seven dollars, so it was just like amazing.
That's amazing.
Leo was one of our top ones, I would think of. So it was a lot of fun, the kids had so much fun, they had like an instant gratification, with their little ducks.
The ducks.
Yeah, the ducks, the ducks.
I love those ducks.
Just, I'm a fan of the ducks.
My own personal experience.
We're even trading, so it's not like we could go back for a duck, so I'm telling you.
So the kids, you know, they loved it, they think it was like really great that they instantly could get something. And then, you know, just a whole month, we'd learn about park health, some of the kids jumping for the very first time, and it was just great, you know, I mean, it literally like brought tears to my eyes, seeing like some third graders jumping for the first time, and knowing that I taught them, so it was really cool. But hopefully next year, I'm hoping to get both schools together, to do kind of like a one-day event, instead of doing it in their gym class, and getting all these fine, young-looking people in suits and ties out there jumping. Hopefully you can get that knee looked at.
Oh, you used to be the excuse again?
You were covering him from.
Yeah, so I think it would be really good. Yes, so that was great, it was really fun, it was fun to do it, the kids had a lot of fun, and it's, you know, for a great cause, so, it's fabulous.
Good job. Thank you. And don't mistake the rest of me and Mr. Ashi, we don't want to. I'm sure there's, we do pretty, I know the board just want to recognize you publicly.
Thank you, yeah, I appreciate it, very nice of you.
Thank you.
Kids did everything, so.
Yeah.
If there are no other questions or concerns about any of the other reports under the financial report?
Hold on, I got some questions.
Yeah, just like the other one.
A quick one, it's for Sean. What's the access test?
Access test is.
Access test is for our.
What is that, so is it just making sure they have progress?
It shows them where they are on the spectrum of receiving the L L services.
Okay.
And then once they have a certain point, they then leave out of that program altogether, so they just receive less services at that time once.
Okay, and what is the D L N assessment?
Dynamic assessment, which replaces the A P A test, which is for special education students who aren't able to take the nor, the regular assessment. Good one. Any questions under the financial? Property transportation? Anyone has an opportunity to go to the, uh, Ms. Wazabi, she's having a, I think, a national cultural thing on Thursday afternoon at two thirty, if you're available, I won't be there, but I will be in her class at nine o'clock reading to the kids. I'll be babysitting the twins in the afternoon.
The only, I think, two things we're adding there in your, what was sent out to you?
On the property transportation?
Was the, um.
By the V?
Yes. We have some new additions that were hatched, they, Downing School, other kids would be, other kids will walk over, give a look at that. And then contract for foster count special services. He's transportation expert. I feel you, if you have any questions.
Penny, come. No, it's just a contract that we signed, so we decided to add it into this agenda, instead of waiting until, it's for the fifteen sixteen school year. So a lot of our regular contracts that we have are now coming up, so we just, we're trying to stay on top of it, so that when we get everything approved as quickly as possible, we can make sure we're all set up for fifteen sixteen. Under personnel, there were two items added, five and six. You're stationed on the sick leave, number twenty-seven.
I have a question on number three. Who is that?
Mrs. Yessi, would you like to.
Yeah, um.
Welcome, Mr. Ray.
Good evening.
Hi. He is a grandparent of one of our students at Downing, who I think for years and years, he used to come in and volunteer, he's a retired police officer from Philadelphia, who's also involved in, I guess, like theatrical things, like that's one of his hobbies, and he used to do it years ago, and he kind of approached me and said he'd be still interested in doing it, and a lot of the teachers remember, remembered him doing it, so he, um, we met, I discussed it with Mark, he submitted all like, you know, criminal check, fingerprint stuff and everything, to make sure he was safe and appropriate for our kids, and he's just somebody from the community that wants to be involved just for fun. Um, routinely, probably once a week for kindergarten.
Okay. That answers my kindergarten question.
Okay, there you go. Yeah, we did see.
Your prank question mark, question mark.
We did.
Yeah, well, currently if I'm wrong, even if you have a volunteer, a volunteer coach or whatever, don't they still have to have the grown-up check done? Yes, that's right. How about finance, folks, anything on the finance area? Nothing was added, since the information was set out, that's all right.
Is number four the remainder of the year, or is that an interim issue?
It's for the remaining part of this year, however, as soon as you approve it, you can stop the very next week, depending on circumstances, or it can continue throughout. So by proving it today, you're proving it for the rest of this whole year. If it were to continue by, into September, you would then be reapproving it.
So I guess my question is, is what is the benefit of using this service as to using, like, we would send one of our teachers to in-home instruction?
It's a hospital-based service that is through the hospital.
Got it.
So they work with the doctors there, right, that come in during certain hours when the students have been.
Take care.
Certain things.
And number eight, we had a chat last week, to a surprise of Louis Summers' point, are we public a future noting if funds are being sent to us, or we're sending funds? So in this case, we're actually receiving. First, yeah.
Stephen, do we have further questions on the curriculum? Hearing none, policies, public relations?
I have a couple. Um, the substance abuse three two one eight and four two one eight. Um, I, I think that if you. I think that I feel like we need to see the whole thing.
True.
Because when you read about it, as it, in the second sentence, it talks about if needed, the board attorney, and I feel like anything that's telling me that I may want to ask an attorney, means that I really need to read the whole thing. Because I probably should, and since we, as, as we used to meet as a policy board, and actually talk about policy for an hour or two, or whatever we were there for, I feel like we at least, I would be, since I know we're, we're now in an hour open while meeting as a whole, instead of our hot suburbs, I feel like we need to do that. And also, um, number eight six three oh for bus driver and emergency school bus procedures, because since we're now in that category and we have a bus, I don't know that it was as relevant to us prior, because we really didn't have that as an issue, but I feel like we need to see that as a whole as well. Because it talks about guidelines, I think, and things like that.
Well, this is gonna be, tonight's gonna count as the first read, uh, board policies have to have two readings to become policy, so prior to the, it will probably be, or identification of all the board members, if we got copies for the policies to read here.
Right, I mean, a couple of them are just revisions.
Yes.
You can see that.
Mm-hmm.
But that substance abuse and the bus driver one, um, the substance abuse is pretty, looks pretty substantial in what its wording, its change to wording is. And I think it's just like requirements as far as like employee guidelines, meaning our employees, and, um, it was very, it sounds like it was very vague. And not that we want it to be stringent, but we at least needed to know what it is that they're implying that they want us to say, and it just says, if needed, seek board attorney. Well, that to me means something.
And if I can just jump on that last policy, I think it also, I think will be proven, and maybe these gentle, fine general are doing that, if we, I think it would be helpful, if we had a job description for the bus driver or drivers, uh, so they know what we expect of the, of the driving. We have that.
Yeah, I think we did. I think we did that, though.
That's yours. No, no, I just throw more meetings in, and then I return that. But I think it'd be helpful.
I have a question, a quick. One zero one three four, four step evaluation no longer required, however, um, personal opinion, I think we should still.
We talked about that.
We should still do that, I think we should evaluate ourselves, even if it's not something that's mandatory.
Absolutely, we had that discussion, and it really make, makes us reflect on, were we, were we effective, where could we have done a better job as a board member and as a board, yes. So we'll continue to do that. I'm sure Samantha will support that. I should send her, because she's lost. Okay, all right, uh, one thing that I just want to share with the board before we go to the regular meeting. I run into some of the people in our community at, at the gym where I, I go to, and one member of our community approached me, I've asked that she come to next month's meeting. She's going to be, coming to the board asking permission to plant some milkweed at Downing and Bam, she would take care of weeding and keeping it clear to bring in the monarch butterflies for the children to see the, the developing stages, and when the season ends, which usually is around the end of September, my wife used to be saying, take for her second graders. She would then come and clean out the milkweed flower from the garden, but she needs to make that request, but I just want to, you know, she approached me at the gym several times, we've had a discussion. She feels it would be something nice for the children to see the different stages, uh, going to, becoming the monarch butterfly, so.
Kindergarten is singing a song right now.
We did.
About.
You, you know, you can actually tag them, my wife's kids just tag them, once they became butterflies, and you could follow other people on a flight from here now to Mexico that was made. And by the color code, you could tell they came from New Jersey, or. Okay. We're gonna call, uh, take a break and let's start properly.